Test, 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 test. I don't, is it on? Okay, we're good. Someone want to? Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Lake County Planning Commission hearing scheduled for June 27th. I would like to call this meeting to order and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you so much. Danae, may we have verification of legal notice? Thank you. Just to confirm, we do have verification of legal notice. Moving on, we are to approve the minutes from the June 13th, 2024 Planning Commission hearing.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes from June 13th, 2024 Planning Commission hearing.
Second.
Just, we have a motion and a second, but let's correct that. There is a minor correction on page one of those minutes. There is an error of date of March 14th to be corrected to June 13th to reflect the correct date on the, on the meeting. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Motion on the minutes as amended.
Motion on the minutes as amended?
A second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The approval of the consent agenda carries. Next, we have public input. This would be a chance for anybody from the public wishing to speak on anything that is not listed on the agenda.
Madam Chair, we do have one special item today to present.
All right, Director Turner, floor is yours.
Our Planning Division team is pretty close. Planners are very collaborative. We work well together. We bounce ideas off of each other. And so we couldn't let Eric Porter's retirement go by without acknowledging the important role that he has played on our team for seven years. Would you mind? Come on, Porter. Come stand by me. Eric Porter joined the Community Development Team while I was still here as a planner. And so we worked together for a couple of years. And I got to tell you, the, the things that stand out when you get to know Eric Porter is that is his down-home charm. He's a, he's very approachable. He is very personable. He jokes with you. He enjoys the public. He's very good at talking and answering questions. We would go on site visits together sometimes, which you know in Lake County means you're in the car for like a good three hours. And so we, we debated all kinds of stuff, like how much Chardonnay is not better than Viognier. And, you know, and just about our very various experiences. But, but everything is, everything about Porter is lovable and endearing. So now he's getting a little curmudgeonly and he has decided that he has, he has more important things to do than be a planner. And we're going to miss you. And I know that you're not going too far. That's another good thing about planners. They can move, they can take other jobs, but we have email and texting. And so we now just have a broader, wider team to bounce ideas off of. And so I know we're still going to be talking to you, Porter. I would like to see if anybody else would want to participate in a moment of public input if possible.
Absolutely. Anybody would, I would encourage anybody to have, to take some time and acknowledge or, you know, I don't want to say roast, but, but come up and say something for Eric. I definitely encourage it. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Karen Mantelli. I have had the pleasure of working with Eric several times. And I'm kind of tested the fact that he does have a good sense of humor. And he's always been very knowledgeable and helpful to get me on track. But he always does it with a, how about you just do this and then just do it? He doesn't mess around when he does tell you things, but he has always been very helpful. So congratulations on your retirement, Eric, and I think you will be missed here. But I have had the pleasure of working with this funny man.
Thank you, Karen. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Rick Tuker. You may have heard the story before, maybe others haven't, but the cycle of life. Thirty-five years ago, I became a planner out of grad school. And I attended, my first job was Carmel by the Sea. And the very first day I started, this gentleman was sitting next to me because it was his very first day as well. I came to the city three years ago, or I'm sorry, to the county, other cities here in Lake County, three years ago to work on some projects. And I only ran into you because of sheer coincidence.
Wow.
No idea Eric was here. So again, cycle of life, congratulation on your retirement. I retired for all of about three months and then got so bored and take up other jobs. Hopefully you're not as dumb as I am because it's not as fun as retirement. So congratulations to you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you. Go for it, Mary. Yeah, absolutely. All right.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mary Claybon, Associate Planner. I started with the Community Development Department a little over three years ago as a technician. And there was a lot to learn. And in that amount of time, Eric was my go-to guy. He was the one that taught me how to perform a tribal consultation, how to write a draft initial study, how to adjust conditions of approval that are specific to the project. And without Eric's knowledge and guidance, I wouldn't be the planner that I am today. So thank you, Eric.
All right. She's just following the lead, yeah.
I've never been on this side, actually. Michelle Iris, Principal Planner. I too started as a planner in 2017 and Porter was here. I think you were hired just before me or maybe just around the same time. And you know that although I grew up in Ukiah and generally in the area, planning in Lake County was new to me. And Porter was definitely, as well as Mireya as a planner, were two of the people that I shadowed a lot and learned a ton. And they were always welcoming with open arms. But the thing I liked the most about Porter, besides everything else that everyone has already said, is that he's very solution-oriented. And I think that's so important in planning, you know, as long as we're following the code, we want to be solution-oriented and approachable and friendly. So that's something that I really take away from my time here with Porter. So we'll miss you for sure.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning. My name is Trish Turner. I'm an Assistant Planner with the Community Development Department. Eric, so I started as an office assistant in the Community Development Department. I worked up to Planning Technician. And when I became a Planning Technician, I didn't know anything about the zoning ordinance or much about anything. And every time I came to ask Porter, Porter would show me where it was in the code so I can learn the code. And today I can recite the code substantially because of this man right here. And we rode together for two years as, as we commuted to work and stuff like that. And I really got to know you as a person. I didn't want to come up because I'm going to cry.
It's okay.
Because you're going to be very well missed, Porter. We love you.
Anybody else? If we, do we by chance have any hands in the Zoom room, Sam? I don't want to leave anybody out. Oh, excellent. Make a, Mackowitz, maybe?
Okay, Donna, I'm giving you permission to speak. If you can just... Go ahead, you should. It looks like you should be able to speak now.
Good morning, Donna. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can now. Donna Mackowitz, Red Bed Audubon. And I would like to thank Mr. Porter for always offering advice, fast communications, and he will definitely be missed. All the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. I'm not, I'm not sure if you heard him, but he did say thank you as well.
And is there anyone else in the Zoom room? I don't see any other hands at this time.
Okay.
Okay.
One last glance for our citizens' input for Eric Porter's retirement. All right, I'll close public and I'll bring it back. Hey, I like that. I'll bring it back to the commission just so we can have our opportunity to speak. Commissioner Hess, if you would.
Eric, thank you so much. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Hi, Eric. Everardo Chavez is here. Just want to say thanks. I remember when I first came on the job here, it was in 20, I think 2021. And I remember all your reports and how you would come up here and it just, you just knew what, what to say. And every question that we had, you knew how to answer and where to start. So it was really helpful as a new Planning Commissioner up here to hear and, and see your knowledge about, you know, everything that we, that we go over on the Planning Commission. So thank you.
But Solon Brown, I just want to add, Eric, a couple of months ago, we were talking up in the parking lot and he had mentioned this, this day was coming. And I was, I had mixed emotions and feelings. I was happy for Eric, but at the same time, I felt a little sadness. Because I've, prior to sitting on the Planning Commission, as a Tribal Stork Preservation Officer, I worked a lot in coordination with Eric. And I have to agree that he was always solution-oriented in, in his work. Easy to talk to, even when there was hard conversations that needed to be had, he was easy to talk to. And so when I heard he was retiring, I thought, oh, no. We finally have somebody from my perspective that understood tribal consultation and the tribe's role. And when I heard in, in his voice that he was going, I was like, oh, man, like it, it's taken all of this time. And, and I felt like that one of the best advocates for the tribal community was going to be leaving. And so I celebrate you today, Eric. I'm thankful for you. I'm thankful for the relationship we've created. Not only in my previous role, but as a commissioner. You always have good solutions, easy to talk to. And the one thing that I really love about your character is that if, if there was something that was done wrong, you admitted it and corrected it and find a way to correct it. So mistakes didn't continue to happen. And that wasn't often, but you were approachable and it was easy to have that conversation. So I thank you and wish you nothing but the best in your retirement.
Eric Porter. I know I personally appreciate all that you have brought to the Planning Commission since I have been here. I'll echo what Commissioner Chavez has said. Your reports and your, your presentations were always very detail-oriented, very to the point. I look forward to your presentations. So thank you for all of that. But what I want to thank you most for is what you've done to the Planning Department. Look at what, the impact that you've had on all of these young individuals. You're a mentor and they will never forget what you brought to them. You've had people that have probably started answering phones that are now proud and now they're planners, associate planners. You have people that are taking their knowledge and their education to other departments and other counties. But neither here nor there. That is what good structure is based on, good leadership. You know, it trickles down and you will be missed on that note. But your, your legacy will, will live on and they know how to get ahold of you if they have questions. And we appreciate all that you've done. It's been a pleasure. All right. Sam, do you want to get a picture? All right. Anybody who, staff, if there's anybody from staff that would like to be a part of the photo with, with them, I invite you to go ahead and stand with them. I will let everybody shuffle back. Enjoy your day, guys. Thank you so much for coming out. Appreciate you. All right. Thank you so much for being patient, everybody. And we will move right along to our first timed item for 9:05. This is a public hearing continued from May 23rd, 2024 for consideration of a major use permit, UP 21-28 and mitigated negative declaration, IS 21-29 for commercial cannabis cultivation, including 29,500 square feet mixed light cannabis canopy within 15 greenhouses and type 13 cannabis distributor transport only self-distribution license for cannabis transportation. Applicant is Green Handle Farms LLC, Garth Markson. The location is 3050 Big Valley Road, Kelseyville, APN 008-037-01 and 008-035-14. In just a moment while we pull up our presentation.
Trying to figure out which screen it is, Sam, that I would share. I had it and then I lost it. This one, right? Well. It's up here. Open.
Yes, please. Oh, wait, here we go. Okay, cool. F5.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mary Claybon. I'm an Associate Planner with the Planning Division with the Community Development Department. Today for your consideration is UP 21-28, IS 21-29, Green Handle Farms, applicant Garth Markson. There are two things I want to note. The biological assessment has been attached as a green sheet. And there is one proposed change for this project. Staff would like to recommend to strike TCR3 within the draft ISMND and conditions of approval. The language is specific to tribal monitoring, however, no consultation was requested and staff did not determine monitoring as necessary with the provided documentation within the project.
Thank you for that.
The applicant and consultant are both present in chambers today. And for today's agenda, we will go over the permit request, the project scope, the site description, project analysis, aspects of interest, cumulative impacts, and recommendations and conditions. The project proposes one A-type 3B license and three A-type 1C licenses for 29,500 square feet of mixed light canopy within greenhouse structures and a type 13 distributor transport only self-distribution license. There are two parcels that are utilized for this project and the com- There are two parcels that are utilized for this project, and the combined acreage is 38.85 acres. The site is located approximately a mile and a half northwest of downtown Kelseyville. The zoning for the location, general plan designation, is agriculture, and base zoning is agriculture preserve. This is within the Kelseyville Planning Area in Supervisorial District 4. The site description, the surrounding areas consist of agricultural lands with a residence located on the eastern parcel. The natural topography of the area is generally flat with up to five-feet elevation changes across the site. Historical uses of the site include pear orchards, vineyards, and hay operations. The project's scope, as proposed, includes a 30-by-60 metal processing building, three 30-by-60 greenhouses for immature plant propagation, 15 30-by-100 greenhouses equipped with odor filtration and blackout materials, three 10-by-10 sheds for security and pesticide chemical storage, four parking spaces, one being dedicated to ADA compliance. There are interior roadway improvements and existing driveway. It's a gravel driveway with a gate. There are four 3,000-gallon water tanks proposed. The applicant also proposes an electrical upgrade for the greenhouses and processing facility, as well as a solar array to supplement the power needs for the project. There is also a six-foot perimeter fencing around the cultivation area and a backup generator for emergency use only. Existing uses on the site include one irrigation well, two residential wells, permitted septic system, a residence, residential accessory structures, a residential swimming pool, a horse corral, chicken coop, and the locking access gate. The project analysis and regulations reviewed for compliance include the Lake County General Plan, the Kelseyville Area Plan, the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and California State Regulations. Within the Lake County General Plan, the following were used to identify any policies that may be particular of interest for the project. That includes Chapter 3 land use, Chapter 7 health and safety, Chapter 8 noise, and Chapter 11 water resources. There are no conflicting policies within the general plan. However, there are no specific policies addressing commercial cannabis cultivation in the general plan. The Kelseyville Area Plan was analyzed. I, well, staff found multiple policies and goals specific to the project. Cultivation of cannabis is not an incompatible use, as the local area is primarily agriculture. The applicant is required to adhere to the State Water Resources Quality Control Board's general order, requiring runoff to be retained on-site, mitigating any off-site downstream drainage impacts. The security plan for the project was reviewed to meet the requirements of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance by the Lake County Sheriff's Office, and agency comments are attached to the staff report. Within the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, Article 4 agricultural preserve was reviewed, as well as Article 27, uses generally permitted. The SEQA initial study found that the project could cause potential impacts to the following resources: aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, noise, and tribal cultural resources. A mitigated negative declaration is the proposed SEQA environmental determination for the project. All identified impacts can be reduced to less than significant with mitigation. Public comment for this project, period occurred from May 18, 2023 to June 19, 2023, and these mitigations are outlined in the staff report, attachments to draft conditions of approval, and attachment for draft initial study. Notification of the project was sent to local tribes on August 23, 2022. Tribal consultation was not requested. The notice of intent and legal notice for this hearing were provided to tribes. An aspect of interest for this project is that it is within the farmland protection zone, and it is considered farmland of local importance, which does require any cannabis cultivation to be maintained within permanent structures, greenhouses equipped with odor filtration, and the blackout screening materials. An additional aspect of interest is access. The applicant proposes interior roadway improvements to adhere to any Public Resource Code 4290, 4290 road standards. With that, they have submitted their site plans that do show that it does meet the requirements for 4290 once the roadways are installed. An additional aspect of interest is water use. All major and minor use permits are required to submit a hydrological analysis. The particular hydrological analysis for this project determined that the total combined uses of the commercial cannabis cultivation and the residential uses would be approximately 3.8 acre-feet a year. The recharge rates for the aquifer during a severe drought year are estimated to be 4.41 acre-feet per year. The drought management plan that was submitted also shows conservation methods that will be utilized by the applicant during a declared drought emergency. An additional aspect of interest. There is an established PG&E connection for the dwelling on-site that uses a 200-amp service currently. An electrical upgrade for the total proposed use of 800 amps is sufficient to provide the power for the existing residential and proposed cultivation of the project. A solar array is proposed as well to supplement the grid power.
How long would that upgrade to 800 take?
I can defer that question to the applicant's consultant. However, I do find that most of the time when these building permit applications are submitted for electrical upgrades, they can be processed fairly quickly with the Building Safety Division. And I anticipate it would be processed likely within a three-month period.
Thanks.
Cumulative impacts for the project. Within one mile of the proposed project, there are two pending and two approved projects. And within three miles of the proposed project, there are nine pending and 14 approved projects. The environmental recommendations for this project are to adopt mitigated negative declaration initial study IS 2129 for use permit 2128 with the findings found in the staff report. Major use permit recommendations, approve use permit UP 2128 with the proposed conditions of approval and with the findings found in the staff report with the request to strike TCR3 from the project.
All right.
That concludes my presentation. It is available for questions and commentary.
Excellent. Thank you, Mary. Do any commissioners have questions for staff before we open it up to the public?
I just have a quick question regarding the communication with US Army Corps. Is there a permit being sought through that agency, or is that just their comment?
No, that's a standard comment that had been received. There is not any proposal for a lake stream bed alteration.
Okay, thank you.
Was early activation granted for this property?
This site did not have early activation because it's within the farmland protection zone, and it does require to be in permanent greenhouse structures. Early activation, when it was an allowable use, was for outdoor cultivation only.
Yeah, thank you. And I saw on the biological resources assessment, I forget which page it was talking about, but it spoke about inundation or saturation of the soil in regards to wetlands. I know that it's not, or they don't classify it as wetlands, but there was a few comments that we received speaking about inundation on that parcel or surrounding parcel. So I just want to keep that in mind, I guess.
I can respond to that.
Okay.
So when the building permit is applied for through the Building Safety Division for the greenhouse structures and for the processing facility, the Building Safety Division will make the determination whether the site needs to have any buildup of ground materials prior to them issuing the permit, and that would be a fill level. Typically, we see this within flood zones, and that does not apply within this case.
Because that was another question I had, if there was going to be some kind of, you know, to raise up the greenhouses and what materials were going to be used. And obviously, you can't use concrete pads under these, right?
So that has actually been a subject that has gone back and forth with our applicants and consultants. We have projects that were approved utilizing concrete pads. And then we also have applicants that have chosen to utilize gravel instead of the concrete pad to preserve the farmland of local importance and not to place anything permanently there that would alter the farmland of local importance. So at this time, within the current zoning ordinance, doesn't specify whether concrete materials are sufficient or whether it should be gravel. But at this time, the applicant is proposing gravel.
Okay, yeah, because, I mean, that's good that they are proposing gravel. But the fact that it, that the ordinance allows for concrete pads to be used in APZ, it's kind of, you know, you want to preserve it, but at the same time, you're allowing concrete pads, so.
I understand, and I can defer to county council for that.
Okay, thank you. I'll just, I'll wait till after the...
I agree with your comment, though.
I, yeah, absolutely. Commissioner Hess, anything before I open it up for the public?
Just a couple of little details. On page 9, it says the nearest dwelling is 860 feet south of the cultivation site, and on page 11, it says 500 feet.
So originally, the project had gone through different planners, and I analyzed, staff analyzed the project separately and found that there was a closer dwelling, so I incorporated that into the staff report.
So that's the 500?
Yes, that's correct.
Page 14 says encroachment may need to be upgraded to meet Commercial Access Entry standard. That's equivocal, "may," "may" or "may not."
So that will be determined by the Department of Public Works Roads at the time that the building permits are submitted.
Thank you. One other question. There's Mr. Renfro who sent in a comment, and he mentioned the strong, strong odor, which disturbs him and his grandson. And he also mentioned that at a previous grow in the area, there'd been a shootout, and a truck drove through a neighbor's yard. Were those legal grows, and would this filtration system proposed for these greenhouses address that stronger odor issue?
So yes, that is a two-part question, and I can answer both. The odor filtration is likely to mitigate the odors. We have received complaints for other permitted sites from the general public for their odor filtration systems within greenhouses. And at that time, the Community Development Department will reach out to the committee and advise them that we have received a complaint. We will utilize the odor mitigation plan within the property management plan. And from there, we also request that the odor filtration systems be maintained for their annual maintenance. For the first part of that question, which was the activity in the area, that has been referred to code enforcement. Those were not permitted grows.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. I'm going to take this opportunity now to open up public comment. This is the opportunity for anyone wishing to speak about this item. Opposition, support, questions. We have staff and the applicant and the consultant, I do believe, here. All I ask is that you do state your first and last name, and please write it down on the sheet as well. And you'll have three minutes.
There we have, we do not have anyone in the Zoom at this point with their raised hand.
Thank you, Sam. I will check back with you here shortly.
Good morning. My name is Peter Windrim.
Good morning.
Good morning. I rise to an issue, to address an issue of the outdoor lighting. We own properties. My sister is here, and her husband Roberto and my other sister Phyllis own three adjoining parcels to the east of this. There's one parcel in between. The issue has to do with the lighting provision in the code... Just a second here. The conditions, I'm sorry. The conditions of approval, and that is under aesthetics, Section B and subsection B 2. And in that section, it says all greenhouses incorporating artificial lighting should be equipped with blackout film material to be used at night for maximum light blockage. That's a good thing. What is omitted from this section is a provision that is recommended by the state and that is consistent with the Dark Nights Initiative. And that is one specifically that is set forth in the code of... Pardon me. In the California Code of Regulations that relates to aesthetics. And that is a requirement that all lighting that is not of the greenhouses is deflected downward. That provision is left out of this condition and should be included. The, pardon me. Instead, what there is, is a, and by the way, it is recommended by the California Department of Cannabis Control that such a provision, that that provision be included as well. It's referenced in, however, in the mitigated initial declaration. That requirement is not in here. It's simply left up to the applicant to put up those lights and observe that there aren't, that they're not under the good faith provision that the applicant will manage them in such a way that does not affect the neighboring properties. And that's not sufficient. It's not sufficient because we have personal experience with outdoor lighting. A neighboring property immediately neighboring to this had a pumping station at their orchard and with mercury light that cast light clear to our place, even though I'm out in the field in the middle of the night taking care of irrigation on a hayfield. So we would ask very much that that condition, which is specific, and it would say that outdoor lights used for safety or security purposes be shielded and downward-facing. It should be included as the statutory language is. They say statutory, it's in the Code of Regulations, California Code of Regulations, Section 16304. So if you add that to that aesthetics provision, because in its absence, there's no enforcement. In its absence, if we have a problem, we come to you, sorry. We can't do anything about it because it's not a specific condition in the permit. And I've had experience, I'm an attorney, by the way, for having years, and I have had experience and efforts to try to obtain compliance with permits that just simply said, well, parties, you take care of it, sort of thing. So in, and by the way, I should say, your staff has been very helpful, and we appreciate that very, very much. But please include that provision as well.
I appreciate you bringing that to our attention and for your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Before you start, staff, did you, would you like to kind of compile all of the questions and concerns and then address them all at once? Okay. Good morning.
Good morning, Honorable Chair and Commissioners. My name is Garth Markson. This is my partner, Matt Schlegel. We just wanted to thank you guys for hearing the use permit and thank County for guidance. Mary, I've worked with you. Thank you, appreciate it. We're just up here to put a face to the company.
That's, that's...
Say hi, good morning.
Hi, good morning. Yeah, this is kind of your opportunity. I don't know if you've had any dialogue with your neighbors, you know, some people take the time and tell us, you know, what they're about, where they're from.
We've seen a few of the complaints, issues. We're going to do our best to work with the neighbors. We're not trying to create any headaches out there. We're going to build a really nice, clean business, and, yeah, I mean, if there's any problems, we're not looking to make any more, and we'll solve them, so.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay. Well, I think we still have a few people that want to speak, so we'll, we'll kind of roll with it, and then if there's anything that you guys would like to chime in on afterwards, I'll give you the opportunity.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Karen Mantelli. I am here to speak in support of not only this project, but also my applicants who have been committed here for the last three-plus years and waiting out this use permit application and process. So, and as the staff report, you know, did state and the presentation did indicate, you know, the project does respect the Lake County zoning ordinance, and as my clients, you know, did say, anything that does need to be taken care of will be addressed. They do operate and will operate, you know, an operation that is going to be respectful of all those, and the Community Development Department, you know, does see that this project as proposed so far is in conformance with the codes. And as was mentioned, the hydrology report, which was submitted, which is required in part of this process, is, does show that, you know, that will not impact the neighboring water. One thing also is that, you know, there will be no tree removal as part of this, and one of the good things is, is that these cultivation operation will be held within greenhouses, but will not have a cement foundation pad, as the code does give the flexibility, and, but they are going to do gravel underneath, so it's just going to be a less interruption into the soil. I do want to point out mitigation measure TCR-1 requires training prior to initiation of ground disturbance. AB 52 tribal consultation, as was stated, was already had taken place. The applicants, and we have reached out to, about this, and we, as we do take this artificial preservation seriously, reached out to the Big Valley Band of Homo Indians to arrange for cultural artifact identification, have had communication with Sarah Ryan about this, and she responded to our request and informed her that we'll, that project team will be working with her to initiate that training, to set that up. So I requested the Commission follow staff's direction and adopt the mitigated negative declaration and also approve the use permit, UP 2128. If you have any questions, I would address them as well, but if not, thank you very much for your time.
I had a quick question. The residence on site, is that going to be used by the partners or the?
No.
So what is the, what will the use of the residence on site be?
Well, the property owner, that is owner right now, is using it as his own residence, so.
Property owners, and then these are the, just the applicants?
These are rent, leasing, yes, the property.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am not an attorney, and it will be obvious when I say that. I'm here, the only reason I had the nerve...
Oh, I apologize.
I'm sorry. My name is Tony Brown, and my dad is Tom Renfro, and the, one of the main reasons I had the nerve to come today is because of Mary Claybon. I have had numerous wonderful conversations with her, and she makes you really feel like you are being listened to, because I've lived in this, on this property in the middle of Big Valley for over 30 years. Before I bought the, before my husband and I purchased the property, I used to ride my horse as a child from my dad's property, Tom Renfro, on Renfro Drive through all this, which once was lovely property, to my grandmother's house. One grandmother lived on East Finley Road, so I would trespass on a number of parcels as a nine-year-old on my horse to see that grandma. Then I would go down to Park Drive and see my other one. Because of things that have happened in that area, the property, a lot of the parcels are not lovely anymore. My daughter and I used to ride our horses legally. We would ask people to ride through their property, and it was a lovely area. The last time my daughter and I rode through, there was someone sitting with a rifle, and he, you know, whatever that sound is that they make when they do it, to let us know he was sitting there guarding his marijuana. That was not a legal grow. And all you have to do is come out there and see what some of these growers have left in that area to know why somebody who cares about the area doesn't like the grows. If Mike, where the parcel is being requested for this project, if his property wasn't for sale, I wouldn't have nearly the concerns that I do have, but it is for sale, and he wants to sell it. He had it listed, and he, and now he has it listed privately with signs out there. I think Mike does care. He's been a wonderful neighbor to us, but once the property sells, we get people in here from, not from Lake County, that think they're above Lake County laws and think that they don't have to follow code enforcement. They don't have to do what the planning department says, and I'm not, this isn't hearsay. On our beautiful piece of property, that we have lots of trees, and we don't cut down our trees either. There are no trees where this is planned to be, where this project is, so there's no trees to be cut down. And so that was a statement that kind of surprised me. I thought, there's no trees there, there's nothing to cut down. We have lots of oak trees, and one thing that my nephew loves about our property is all those oak trees are still there because our intention for our property, it's just beautiful. We raised our three kids there. I love every single animal that we have there, horses, a pony, our chickens and everything. We're not using the property, and I know this wouldn't make sense to many, many people, but we're not using the property to gain money. We just love the area. We have 11 parcels that are, border us, and I believe at one time, out of the 11, eight of them, I think, they were all growing, and the smell was so horrendous. I couldn't go outside in the evening. It was really, really sad. One thing that the owner of the property, not the people that want to grow there, the owner called my husband and I and asked us if we would consider withdrawing our letters, and I hope you guys got the letters from Mike Brown and from myself.
Yes.
He, one thing he mentioned was it was for one greenhouse, or maybe he said three. And I said, Mike, right there in it, it says it's for, I believe it's 13 or 15. It's a lot. And he kept referring, no, 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 it's only three. And then he asked, he wanted us to say, what is the main thing you don't, why you don't want this? And mine is smell. It gives me horrible headaches. It's atrocious. If you've ever had to live by these grows, you can't stand it. And I think one of the wording that was used is if, if somebody complains about it, likely it will be looked into. I'm sorry, I don't think it will be. I have had to suffer with the smell of this. Mike also commented to me that he likes the smell of it, and he doesn't understand someone like me who doesn't like the smell of marijuana. I think it's worse than a skunk smell, a freshly killed skunk smell. The marijuana is much worse than that, when you're right near a grow, where we have been surrounded.
I'm, I'm not trying to...
Yes, yes, is my five minutes up?
But you're working on it, but your three minutes is up, but if, I just want you to make, just to kind of ground up the, just conclude your comments, please.
Yep, yep, yep.
You left off at smell, and skunk.
There is a drainage ditch that goes from that property, and it ends up in where all the hitch are, and it really surprises me that that hasn't been looked into a little bit more. Big Valley Road is filled with potholes, and if I understand this right, this is also going to be not just a grow, but people will be able to come there and purchase. And, no, 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 that's not true.
No.
Okay, I like to hear that. And I think you got the message. It's, it's a pretty area, and I would love it if you would take the time to go see what some of the parcels look like that had grows, and then they just up and leave.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Lozano, and Peter's sister, Peter Windrim's sister, and we live east of that, this property, and there's been neighbors behind us, adjacent to this property, that have had, I imagine it's an illegal grow, I don't know, but it has a very strong criminal element feeling to it because of stories of people who've had to interact with a grower, and the mess that there is there, many, many vehicles. I don't know if it has, if they're stolen vehicles or what, but it's a dumping ground as well as just a huge mess in the back, and I don't know it's associated with marijuana grows, which is what they're doing. But I would like to see there be a provision that when this project goes bust, that it gets cleaned up. It's not just dumped, not just abandoned like the piece right next to it has been. And also, along that road that Tony was talking about, is an incredible amount of potholes, and the county has filled in a little bit of them, but then a big part of it isn't, and we always drive that way when we come to Lakeport. But I, I would suggest that the county has, if they approve this, they need to recognize there's going to be much more traffic on the road, and the roads are falling apart there. And also, the lighting, I want to reiterate that the lighting is incredibly intrusive because it affects the wildlife, the owls, everything, and, and we don't need a city, a mini-city in the back of our property. Okay, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you for sharing your comment with us. Hey, Sam, is there anybody in the Zoom room with their hand raised?
No hands raised.
Okay. We still have public comment open in chambers if anyone wishes to speak? Okay. I will close public comment, and I'll bring it back to the Commission to, to kind of discuss, and we'll sift through some of our concerns that I know a few of us jotted down. I know, I'm sure staff also jotted down a few things. A couple of things that I know I will just throw out there, and then you guys can kind of answer. I know a major thing was the downward lighting, so I know you guys will respond to that. The downward facing, the dark sky regulation, the gravel road, or the gravel down on the, instead of the concrete pads using gravel, if we were going to clean that up in any type of condition of approval, I think that would be important. And then, we've talked about this multiple times, not just on this project, but definitely the abandonment of projects and the way that things have been left. I know it is a very big concern and situation that not only community development is taking on, but also code enforcement. It is very high on their list because it is a follow-through that we are making sure it's part of our figure eight. Commissioner Hess, or anyone else want to add to the comments that we could have staff kind of clarify?
Not add to, but on the question of, it's page 13, glare and heat, perhaps this could be incorporated into a condition of approval, as Mr. Windrim suggested. All exterior lighting accessory to any use shall be hooded, shielded, or opaque. No unobstructed beam of light shall be directed beyond any exterior lot line. That's pretty much standard language, but it is, it's, he's right that it's not included in the actual condition.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Brown, anything to add or any concerns for staff?
No, I think the kind of theme I've been hearing, and, and this is not just specific to this area, but in general, when it comes to, and not understanding if it's, it's legal permitted grows that are, even the environmental issues that are happening, but that's something I've been hearing over and over in the community. And one thing that I know we don't get is in terms of cumulative impact, if that's happening around, around these current sites, if there are abandoned grows that haven't been cleaned up, that needs to definitely, I think, be included for us to understand, because if we're going to continue to issue permits in areas that are being impacted negatively by abandoned grows, then that's something we need to consider when it comes to land use and how it's impacting the land. A lot of the, the stories I know of this valley, it has changed in the last 150 years, and, and it, it doesn't seem to be improving the environment, and so sometimes when we're talking about environmental conditions, we're not considering what the land once looked like. And so to hear some of the community talk about the oak trees and the way the land, and they value the land is, is important. And so I do take those comments, and, and I hear them, and so I think it's something we have to have a conversation about or discuss as we start moving along with the permitting, to better understand what's happening on the ground, because we are the ones approving the permits or denying the permits, and if we're causing an impact, we need to understand that by our approval. So I guess what I'm asking is, in the future, if we can, if that's data that's available to say, yeah, there's, there's been abandoned grows, there's, there's code enforcement, there's issues, that'd be good to know as, in terms of the cumulative impact that we're also being a part of creating by approving some of these applications. So that's still in common. I have information I would like to see moving forward.
Yeah, I'd like to kind of go off of that same comment from Commissioner Brown regarding cumulative impact. I know that we do cumulative impact based on projects that have been approved or are pending, and then that's what I'm guessing the hydrology reports are based off as well, how many projects around the area are using how much of the aquifer. But obviously, the illegal grows are not taken into that consideration. So the good thing about having, you know, somebody that wants to come in here and apply for a, for a permit is that they're trying to do it the right way. Also, the difference between hoop houses and greenhouses are that these greenhouses have to be engineered. Um, also the difference between hoop houses and greenhouses are that these greenhouses have to be engineered. Uh, they're not going to look, or I mean, that's based on opinion, how they look. Uh, but the ones that everyone seems to be talking about are the hoop houses with the plastic and they just left their rod, they cut, they collapse and it just looks really nasty in the neighborhood. Um, obviously for this project, uh, because it has to go through all these steps and, and they have the county watching over them, they can't allow it to become a dump. Um, and that's one of the things that I've noticed in, you know, a lot of people that come in and give their concerns and it's their valid concerns because, you know, this is their neighborhoods and this is what they're going to see when they, when they're living there. So, um, obviously the lighting issue, that's, that's been addressed. But, uh, yeah, I just wanted to kind of chime in on that cumulative impact of, um, you know, all the illegal grows that are in the area that, you know, they leave trash around. They, they don't take care of it because they don't have anybody but themselves watching over it. So, uh, as a community, I believe that, um, you know, you have to be looking out for, for each other. And if you see a place like that, I mean, we have code enforcement that, that can pay them a visit and, and we have to kind of keep these areas, you know, as clean as possible. But illegal grows obviously are not going to follow those rules. So they, they definitely need to be, um, you know, looked at and hopefully, you know, something gets done about those.
And, um, you know, bring it to our attention if, or, you know, to, uh, code enforcement's, uh, code enforcement's attention if you do see something that's abandoned or hazardous or just looks bad. Um, you know, we, we are only a, a small structured team. So, you know, boots on the ground, eyes everywhere, um, that is a good way to be. Um, I also just want to echo Commissioner Brown and his value of the land. Um, I will tell you right now that seeing, um, the people who came and decided to speak, they are rooted here, they have been here for a very long time. Um, and knowing that, um, it's, it's probably hard to see the changing of the, um, of the valley because it has changed a lot. And, um, I, I just see this as a project that could be done very tastefully. Um, it's, it's set back off of that road. The road, yes, I understand is a very, um, it's very bumpy, wavy. It's not in good condition at all, so that should be brought up. Um, not saying that it's the applicant's issue with the road, but it is in very dire need of some attention. Um, what I was trying to say was that this is a, um, it is not a, um, an illegal grow. So when the applicant and everybody has to go through all of these, um, the permitting process, it is done so that it is ran and done very well. So I feel that staff has addressed most of the concerns that the, um, the public has and that everything could kind of be, um, taken care of that way. I don't have any further comments.
Could I tack on a thought about cumulative effects? We are charged with considering cumulative effects in some ways. And we always get a very handy part of the report that shows radius and all of that. And in terms of this project, within one mile of the project are two pending and two approved projects. And within three miles of the proposed project are nine pending and 14 approved. And we've had a consultant come in and give us a briefing on cumulative effects. And at the end of that briefing, she's basically said, or I asked, so one, one week we can approve, we will approve a cultivation site somewhere. And a week later, we're going to tell that person, no, we've hit, we've hit our critical mass. We're, we're asked to consider that, but we don't ever act on that. And I'm wondering what a realistic number is. I'm not saying I know one, but that's, that's something to add up, it seems to me in terms of the number of grows within three miles of each other.
I agree, and also in, um, in the valley and in a protection zone as well. There's only so many of those left in the community.
I'm not saying that this, this is a disqualifier in this particular case, but when we're charged with considering it and we really don't, it's clear as mud.
Yeah, right, yeah. Just looking for either further discussion or motion or if staff wants to kind of give us what they've concluded based on our concerns.
I'd like some feedback about the lighting.
Yeah.
Yeah, no problem, thank you. Um, so down shielded lighting is a requirement in both, um, Article 41 Development Standards and Article 27 specific to cannabis and security lighting, as well as any other associated accessory structures. So we would propose to modify its condition of approval B, that's the aesthetics, uh, B1, and AES 2 mitigation measure to say all outdoor lighting shall be, oh, then I switched over. I was going to quote the language that, um, Commissioner Hess provided, let me grab it. Thank you. Um, all exterior lighting, uh, shall be hooded, shielded or opaque. No unobstructed beam of light shall be directed beyond any exterior lot line. Um, as modification to that, um, condition of approval. So in accordance with Articles 27 and 41. And then if you wanted further clarification on, um, the cumulative impacts or the gravel versus concrete, we would defer to, um, Counselor, potentially, uh, Director Turner for those.
Um, I'm okay on the, um, gravel versus concrete. Do you guys need any more clarification on that, really? No, okay.
Thank you, I have made note of the concern of the commission. We will give that some thought moving forward, thank you.
Um, this might be a, just a random question. If the, never mind, I'm, it's irrelevant. I'm going to, I'm going to strike it and sit on it for a minute. Um, so we're looking for either, um, further discussion or motion.
I'm prepared to make a motion if there's no further comments from the commission.
I have no further comments.
All right.
Do you have any other concerns?
No, I have no further comments.
I move that the planning commission adopt mitigated negative declaration IS 21-29 or green handle farms on property located at, uh, 3050 Big Valley Road, Kelseyville APNs 008-037-01 and 008-035-14 with the findings listed in the staff report dated June 27th, 2024 and as amended today.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second from Commissioner Hess. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the planning commission approve ma- major use permit UP 21-28 for green handle farms on property located at 3050 Big Valley Road, Kelseyville APN dash, APN 008-037-01 and 008-035-14 with the findings listed in the staff report dated June 27th, 2024 and as amended today. If there was amendments on that.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission's decision, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seven calendar day following the planning commission's final determination. You guys doing okay? Need a break? All right, we will move on to our next timed item. Our 920 item is a public hearing for consideration of a, of a proposed subdivision map extension, SDX 24-01 to extend the Valley Oaks subdivision map, SD 0601. Applicant Rick Tucker. Location 18196 and 18426 South State Highway 29 and 18765 Hartman Road, Middletown, APN 014-260-2436 and 51. Just a moment. If, if we can continue any type of conversation out and out of chambers, we would appreciate it. Our meeting has to continue, thank you.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Stockton, uh, Community Development Planner. Um, I am here to present to you a, an extension for subdivision 0601 for Valley Oaks. This expansion is, has been requested by Valley Oaks as their third and final extension, uh, request, um, as their project was approved in 2018. The project was then extended in 2020 and again extended October 5th of 2022. The Lake County Subdivision Ordinance, Section 17-22.9 allows for an extension of subdivisions, uh, for a period up to, not to exceed a total of three years. But the California Government Code, Section 66452.6, subsection E, allows for an extension of no greater than six years. The aforementioned, the aforementioned section of government code is in reference to allow the proposed subdivision extension beyond the county's three-year allowable extension for a total of six years. As you've heard, Valley Oaks has been through many changes and many requests. At this time, uh, they have prepared themselves to apply for their final map pending the approval of this extension. And staff would like to recommend that the planning commission, recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve this third and final extension of subdivision SD 0601 for a period of two years with the findings found in the staff report. As an aside, uh, we did receive many comments, um, from the agencies and many of those, um, could be addressed with the concept that these applicants are not requesting, uh, any further development at this time. This is simply to extend their timeframe to allow them to file the final map.
And then, uh, I would just add, and then at that point, when the map is filed and, um, the future development would occur, then all of the conditions of approval and requirements that the agencies and departments, as well as the original conditions note, um, would be implied.
Imp- yeah.
And that concludes, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions, comments before opening up for the public?
I have, I have no questions.
Okay.
But I am glad this day is here for the Lake of Planning Staff and for the applicant.
I know, I, I, we, we've seen it on our plate a few times, Hess, I know that for sure. Um, any comments before we open it up for public comment? Okay, I will officially open up public comment. This gives anybody the opportunity to go ahead and speak on this item. Good morning.
Good morning, again, Rick Tucker. I am a, uh, planning consultant for, an applicant for the ownership Valley Oaks partner, partners. I think context is important, right? Because we, we have seen this before. I mentioned earlier, I've been here at the county for nearly three years, two, two months short of three years. And I was brought on board essentially for one thing, one thing only, which was to establish a final map that created a lot that served the grocery outlet store and two adjacent, uh, lots. Uh, and we submitted, I don't even know if Andrew's with the county anymore. A wonderful young man, he really helped us. Uh, I met him in October of, uh, 2021 and we submitted our application for that final map in November of 2021. It's a crazy time, took about six months. Maria, I don't even believe was back on board here. Uh, we were assigned a planner six months later, no contact for, for a period of six months. Uh, at the time, then, once we, uh, did meet with Mr. Porter and I got to, to, uh, connect back up with him again, uh, it took us some time to get through a process. The reason being is you remember in 2020, when Grocery Outlet was approved, you, the planning commission, uh, accepted it essentially a one-off, which was to connect Grocery Outlet through the Hartman connection rather than the fourth leg of the roundabout. And that was necessary because there was lawsuit with, uh, Caltrans over that fourth leg. They didn't care too much about the connection. What they really cared about was how Arabian would eventually connect. Uh, that issue's been resolved coincidentally. Uh, the reason why I bring all that up is at the time we filed our application in November of 2021, it took us till 2022 to really go through the process of modifying the map as required by the county to actually add the Hartman connection, already built, uh, for a use already built, but it just took time. And we finally got that approved and I think it was November of last year. So we appreciate the fact that you've allowed to, uh, extensions. They were necessary because of the time it takes to go through process. But what's critically important here and for your knowledge, for the public's knowledge that's interested in this project is to really get that final map created for Grocery Outlet. Because what it does is it allows, you know, Grocery Outlet is spilling off property tax for the commercial parcel down below, not the residential up above. It's spilling off retail sales, but what it's not creating is capital. And in a development that's phased like this, you need capital essentially to create a nut that then feeds the forest moving forward. And the capital is created by that final map that really needs to get recorded by the board so that we could move forward to the next phase. We want to meet with Maria and her team on that next phase this summer. We're already preparing for the connection to the roundabout. So all that context is really important. Let me conclude with this, I, I've been a planning manager, uh, community development director for 25 or 35 years. What I'm hopeful can happen here, without being offensive, is if we can get the, presuming you recommend it tonight, today, we can get scheduled this extension fairly quickly. I think the last one took four or five months just to get from you to, to the board. But if we can get that scheduled quickly and put on the same agenda, separate items, obviously, for the board, the final map, we can really move quickly on this project. So I know you're frustrated, the community's frustrated. Uh, we're, we're prepared to start planning for companion commercial and residential development, but it all starts with recording the map so that the lease and, uh, first parcel in phase one can be sold. Thank you so much, if you have any questions, me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. I appreciate the, um, foreshadowing in your context, that's helpful. Anybody else? Any hands in the Zoom room, Sam?
No, uh, hands in the Zoom room, Madam Chair.
Okay. Take one last glance and officially close public comment. Um, I appreciate staff bringing this to us and, um, hopefully we can, um, get this going and get this and, um, get the process going on how it needs to go to get everything finalized and moving forward. I can't make a motion. Any other, uh, there's any further discussion or motion to be had?
I'm happy to make a motion.
Please.
Uh, I moved that the County of Lake Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve a third and final extension of subdivision SD 06-01 for a period of two years with the findings listed in the staff report dated June 27th, 2024.
All second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Uh, if I could just interrupt for one moment, I'm sorry, before we do take a final vote. Uh, hmm? Typically, requests for extensions are approved by the planning commission. You don't, you, you don't make a recommendation for approval for an extension, uh, for the Board of Supervisors. So the motion should then reflect that. But if you wouldn't mind actually just giving us a minute, we're going to be, we're going to grab that piece of the code for you.
Okay.
And we'll be able to, uh,
Sure.
I'll be able to get back to you in just a moment.
Yeah, that sounds good, we'll just, um, we'll just, yeah, we will take a brief break. Let's see, it's 10:19, we'll come back at 10:25. Yeah, that sounds good. We'll just, we'll just, yeah, we will take a brief break. Let's see, it's 10:19. We'll come back at 10:25. Okay, welcome back. Time now is 10:25. Staff, have I given you enough time?
Yes, thank you very much. We were able to confirm in the subdivision ordinance, section 10.2, that the correct deciding body for an extension of a subdivision map is the Board of Supervisors. So I am affirming our staff's recommendation presented to you as stated.
Okay, so.
Shall I reread it?
If you would, Commissioner Hess, please.
I move that the County of Lake Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve a third and final extension of subdivision SD 06-01 for a period of two years with the findings listed in the staff report dated June 27, 2024.
A second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the subdivision ordinance provides for a 15 calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. on or before the 15th calendar day following the commission's final determination. Thank you so much. Best of luck. Next item is our timed item for 9:35, public hearing for consideration of major use permit UP 20-31 and mitigated negative declaration IS 20-38 for A-type 3 medium outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation, including 43,472 square feet outdoor cannabis canopy and type 13 cannabis distributor transport only self-distribution license for cannabis transportation. Applicant is Alexander Rashid. Location 11540 Bachelor Valley Road, Upper Lake, APN 002-024-22. Good morning. Excellent.
Today for your consideration is major use permit UP 2031 and initial study mitigated negative declaration IS 2038 for Flying O LLC. The applicant, Alexander Rashid, is present in chambers today. There was a green sheet item that was received for tribal comment. The agenda today will be the permit request, the project scope, site description, project analysis, aspects of interest, cumulative impacts, and recommendations and conditions. The project proposes one A-type 3 outdoor grow for 43,472 square feet of outdoor canopy and a type 13 distributor transport only self-distribution license. The acreage is approximately 238 acres. The site is located five miles northwest of downtown Upper Lake. The general plan designation for the site is rural lands resource conservation. The base zoning is agricultural preserve district. This is within the Upper Lake Nice planning area in supervisory district three. The site and surrounding area consists of rural lands and agricultural uses. The natural topography of the area is generally flat. There is a class 2 water course and associated riparian corridor traversing the parcel. Historical land uses include cattle grazing, early activation of this major use permit identified as EA 2037 for cannabis cultivation, and infrastructure for cultivation was established during early activation. So with that, the project operated under early activation in 2020. The proposed cultivation would occur within the EA footprint. The infrastructure required for the cultivation project is present and existing on-site. The residential structures on the parcel are not included in the proposal and would not be utilized for the operation of the project. As proposed, the applicant is proposing 43,472 square feet of outdoor commercial cannabis canopy within the previously disturbed area from early activation. Existing uses include a cabin, a residence, garage, septic system, groundwater well, 24-foot security gate, interior roadway improvements, a loading zone, four Conex shipping containers, one 10-by-10 security shed, one 10-by-10 pesticide fertilizer chemical shed, eight 2,500-gallon water tanks, 20-by-20 soil storage containment area with perimeter fencing, and a six-foot perimeter fence around the cultivation area. The regulations reviewed for compliance include the Lake County General Plan, the Upper Lake Nice Area Plan, the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and California State Regulations. Within the Lake County General Plan, the following policies were reviewed. Chapter 3 land use, chapter 7 health and safety, chapter 8 noise, and chapter 11 water resources. Within the Upper Lake Nice Area Plan, there are multiple goals and policies that have been identified that conform with the project. The applicant has submitted a hydrological analysis and drought management plan for water use and measures to be implemented during declared drought emergency. The well monitoring is required for the life of the project for water usage. The draft initial study mitigated negative declaration incorporates a mitigation measure Bio 1 for biological resources specifically addressing this riparian corridor and the setbacks for pesticides and fertilizer storage facilities for 100-foot setbacks from the bank of any water course, wetland, and vernal pool. So that would include the riparian corridor and the class 2 stream. The following ordinance, the Lake County Zoning Ordinance was reviewed. The following articles were reviewed within the ordinance. Article 4 agricultural preserve, article 27 uses generally permitted, article 34 scenic combining district, article 36 floodway fringe, and article 37 waterway combining district. The SEQA initial study found that the project could cause potential impacts to the following resources. Aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hydrology and water quality, noise, tribal cultural resources, and wildfire. It also should be noted that the project's scope had changed and was reduced significantly. The original proposal included a processing facility. However, they've decided to remove that component and utilize the local processing facilities. And should they wish to move forward with that at a later time, they would be required to adhere to the Public Resource Code 4290, 4290 road standards. But as it applies today, the project is only proposing outdoor. The AB 52 tribal notification for the project was sent to our 12 local tribes on May 8, 2023. There was a tribal consultation requested on May 30, 2023 by the Habemotol Pomo of Upper Lake Tribe. And the tribal consultation concluded on July 26, 2023. The project analysis for SEQA includes a mitigated negative declaration for the proposed SEQA environmental determination for this project. All identified impacts can be reduced to less than significant with mitigation. Public comment period occurred from September 29, 2022 to October 28, 2022. Aspects of interest include the water use for the site. The annual demand for the one acre of proposed outdoor cultivation is estimated at 1.66 acre-feet annually. The hydrological memorandum states that 159 acre-feet will recharge during the drought year and 185 acre-feet will recharge during a non-drought year. The memorandum also stated that the project demand is between 1.3 and 1.6% of the total recharge rate annually meet the water demand for cultivation activities. An additional aspect of interest is the water course and crossing on-site. There is an intermittent class 2 water course that flows through the project property from the northwest, sorry, northwest to southwest. No development is proposed within 100 feet of the identified water course or riparian corridor, which is consistent with article 27 of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance. Additionally, there is a proposal to do a culvert upgrade on the existing culvert. There are no new proposed culverts. An additional aspect of interest is the 1868 John Boone Howard Ranch House on-site. The cultural evaluation recommended a 50-foot setback from the 1868 Victorian-style ranch house be established. As proposed, the project area is approximately 1,100 feet away from the house, directly to the east. And as you can see on the map here, within the screen, the cultivation area is located on the east. The ranch house is located on the west, and the riparian corridor traverses directly through the middle of both. The access points to the cultivation area and the access point to the residence are completely separate, and they will not be utilized interchangeably. Cumulative impacts for this area. Within a mile radius of the proposed project are one pending and zero approved projects. Within a three-mile radius, there are two pending and eight approved projects. The environmental recommendation is to adopt mitigated negative declaration and IS 20-38 for use permit 20-31 with the findings found in the staff report. The major use permit recommendations are to approve use permit 20-31 with the proposed conditions of approval and with the findings found in the staff report. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions and commentary.
Thank you so much. Any questions for staff?
I had a question about the LSAA agreement with CDFW. What was the conclusion of the improvements? And what did CDFW have to say?
So the Lake Stream Bed Alteration Agreement is in accordance with CDFW. And there will be an LSAA agreement determined based on the proposal. The project does need to be approved before they can apply and move forward with the Lake Stream Bed Alteration Agreement. However, it is working on the existing culvert, and no new culverts are proposed.
Before they can apply for the, oh, yeah, it would depend on the approval of the project if they were going to follow through with it, right? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or?
Yeah, I just had a quick question regarding the 1868 structure. Is there any specific reason why the site is not formally listed as a state historical registered site?
So there is not a particular reason as to why it's not listed. I believe that would be up to the owner to make that determination to move forward with the request to list it as a designated historical location.
And so a part of the background that was done in the cultural resource evaluation, this is what's being cited in terms of the history, so that was looked at. Okay. Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, we can open it up for public comment officially. If anybody would like to speak on this agenda item, you're welcome to approach the podium. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Alexander Rashid, and I'm with Flying O Farms LLC. Thank you guys for the time today. I've been waiting about four years to get this all wrapped up and done. Been through a bunch of ups and downs, a merry-go-round, but I appreciate finally being here and getting this done.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have really any questions. I think it was pretty straightforward with the EA and location and all of that. No real opposition?
So Madam Chair, we do have one person in, Donna McKenzie. Can I ask you to unmute?
Good morning, Commissioner. Donna Mackwitz, Redbud Audubon. Can you hear me okay?
Good morning, Donna. We can hear you.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I'd like to mention the draft initial study on page 18 under Discussion Part A is misleading. The biological assessment states it's on none of the sensitive animal species on-site at the visit January 21, 2020, and I assume this is because of the time of year and rainfall conditions. Last month, I visited Bachelor Valley Road 1.2 miles away and found the area rich in bird and rodent diversity. I documented 39 species in an hour, and there were nesting birds on the ground, in trees, in cavities of trees, and nest boxes, and there were two species of bats. If biological assessments were done in spring and fall, reports could shed light on what really is on-site and how projects would affect the wildlife. And then I found it encouraging on page 3, post-construction, it said there will be no use of chemical pesticides, rodenticides, and herbicides. And that's great because there is a large amount of rodent population which feeds the large owl population. And it also stated vegetative waste will be chipped and spread within the cultivation areas. And although considered organic, the waste, like the root ball stalks, leaf stems, can't be tilled back into the soil. So I just wondered, will the buildup be a fire hazard? And also stated, the other waste material will be bagged and sold to biomass engineers. And I searched the internet for a company, biomass engineers, and could not find it, and I just thought that was interesting. We have no objections directly to the permitting of this project with the mitigation measures. Thank you very much.
As always, Donna, we appreciate your knowledge and your comments. Anybody else in the Zoom room, Sam? Thank you. Did either of you want to maybe answer her question on the waste management question on the root balls and things that can't be, are you planning on burning them?
We'll take it to the waste management that is in Clear Lake that takes cannabis-related items for those root balls and things that cannot be recycled.
Okay. Thank you for that. And, Sam, there is no other hands, correct? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission for decision or motion. Or just discussion or motion. Can't talk today.
I have no further questions.
All righty, I think we're in agreement with that, Commissioner Hess.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that the planning commission find that the potential impacts associated with this project can be mitigated to less than significant through the implementation of the mitigated negative declaration, IS 20-38, submitted by Flying O LLC, Alexander Rashid, for property located at 11540 Bachelor Valley Road, Upper Lake, APN 002-024-22, will not have a significant effect on the environment and that the planning commission adopt initial study, IS 20-38, with the findings listed in the staff report dated June 27, 2024.
A second.
Motion and a second by Commissioner Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the planning commission find that the major use permit UP 20-31 applied for by Flying O LLC, Alexander Rashid, on property located at 11540 Bachelor Valley Road, Upper Lake, APN 002-024-22, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27 of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance and that the major use permit be granted based on the findings and subject to the conditions included in the staff report dated June 27, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. The applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the planning commission's decision, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. on or before the seventh calendar day following the planning commission's final determination. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All righty. Okay, that concludes our timed items today. I will look to Director Turner for any non-timed items or department updates.
We have no non-timed items, so I am happy to give you the department update. This past week, or last week, the Board of Supervisors did approve our fiscal year 2425 budget for the department. One of the exciting new things in that budget is the next step. It's lessons learned from the pilot program that the board established called the Roadmap Task Force. This was a focus and fiscal support of two code enforcement officers and two sheriff deputies to spend a lot of time in the Clear Lake Oaks community to see what sort of a difference that type of focused attention could have on a gateway community such as Clear Lake Oaks. We learned a lot. We made a big impact in that neighborhood, and so the board approved the new program, which is called COPTER. It stands, it's an acronym because, you know, we're government, and it stands for Community-Oriented Policing and Targeted Restoration. It will again be a team effort between the Sheriff's Department staff and code enforcement staff, but it's going to change a little bit. Roadmap Task Force was limited to the neighborhoods of Clear Lake Oaks. COPTER is going to keep code enforcement mostly within the Nice-Lucerne communities, but it also allows for an extended sphere of activity for the Sheriff's Department because sometimes when we root out some ne'er-do-wells in this community, they just scooch on down Highway 20, and we find them again in another one. And so this will allow additional flexibility for law enforcement while better suiting the code enforcement to remaining in place because we have certain timelines, you know, due process rights, things like that, notification times. And so that takes a more focused time for code enforcement. So we're really excited about getting started with this new program. I know we celebrated Associate Planner Porter today for his upcoming retirement, and Chair Price did make comment of another planner that we are losing. Catherine Schaefer's, our resource planner, is going to the city. Oh dang, okay. Well, yeah, then the list continues. So Catherine Schaefer's, our resource planner, is moving to the city of Ukiah to take the planning manager position, and she's going to be excellent, and we're going to miss her terribly. Jamie is moving to Mendocino, right? Not Napa, yeah. She's moving to the county of Mendocino to become like a planner. So we're really excited to just, you know, we're really, I don't want to be patronizing, but we're super proud to have been part of her team and to watch both of these planners grow and develop in their careers. So that being said, we will have an introduction coming, hopefully in the beginning of July of the newest addition to our planning team. And his name is Pablo, and he's a local, and he wanted to come back and contribute to the Lake County community, so we're super excited. You know, people are going to leave and grow, and your career path doesn't always mean that you're going to stay on my team, as much as I would like it. So this is just an ongoing development and building up of our planning division. So. What's that? Yes, we have posted the technician position to replace Jamie with hopefully someone equally as dynamic and intelligent.
Okay.
Tomorrow, oh, so for Lake County 2050 update, tomorrow we are having our second General Plan Advisory Committee, our GPAC, meeting. And it's going to be a fun, I am anticipating robust discussion around the general plan overview document that we sent them as well as the key issues document. And this is a gathering of the key issues that arose during our first set, our first series of local area plan workshops.
And where will that meeting be taking place?
Thank you. It's going to be a hybrid meeting here tomorrow from 1:30 to, I think, about 3:00 or 3:30.
Hybrid meaning?
That means it will be both in-person and via Zoom. The link is available, I love how you're prompting me. This is great, thank you. The link is available at the
Practice.
Right? It's available on the first page of our agenda, which is posted on the Lake County Boards and Commissions website or webpage.
Cool.
One last announcement. The timeline for getting applications in to participate on a local area plan advisory committee, LEAPAC, that's our acronym for that one, has been extended due to just calendaring it on the Board of Supervisor's agenda. So if there's anybody that you know who had expressed interest but thinks they may have missed that deadline, please encourage them to continue to apply. We've got a good group, solid group of candidates, but not every position has been filled. We do also have one tribal representative position reserved on every single plan, every single LEAPAC. So we do have some really, some people we've worked with in the past participating in that, but we could use definitely some more. And I think that concludes my department update for today, but I'm happy to take any questions, comments.
Do you have a question, Michelle?
Oh, right. For the commission's knowledge, July 11 at this time has no items. We were going to wait to see if anything was continued from today, but since everything was decided, it is likely that we will adjourn that meeting. There, that definitely concludes. Now I'm serious. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Director Turner. With nothing further to be said, I will adjourn this meeting at 10:53. Thank you. Thank you.[822.93]